May we have the roll?
Chair Paul.
Yes, present.
Vice Chair Barbe.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Barbe.
I am present and I'd like to take a second to compliment the young Pittsburgh Pirate fans in the audience who I saw when he stood up for the pledge of allegiance realizing he needed to, he took his hoodie off and he took his hat off as he did the pledge.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Present.
Commissioner McCarron.
Present.
Commissioner Spear.
Present.
And Commissioner Wyatt.
Here.
First item is approval of the minutes from the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting. Does anyone have any questions of staff? Motion?
Move to approve the minutes of January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Second? Very second.
If voting has been opened, you would refresh your screen please. And voting is five-zero to approve with two standing.
Thank you. Next item is written or oral communications. Do we have anything that is not on the agenda? Nope. And then we'll go to the public hearing, PL twenty-three dash zero-three forty and PL twenty-four dash zero-zero-two-nine, CMS Recycling Center. For the staff report, does anyone have a disclosure? I need to say that I'm familiar with this company from my days in manufacturing and I met with the owner a few days ago to review the project. Thank you, Chair Paul. Craig Madison, Planning Division, CMS Recycling Center, PL twenty-three oh-three forty and PL twenty-four oh-two-nine. It's a conditional use permit modification and administrative adjustment. You can see that the zoning on the left-hand side is M one and the red is the expansion area and the black is the entire area that they're moving into. Then we have the general plan which is LI. LI is a general plan designation that requires allows recycled facilities, but it has to be road conditionings or, this is why it's conditionationary modification. Project setting on this, as you can see in the aerial, we have SR seventy-eight along the northerly edge. We have Mission Road here. It's just east of an extra white street and surrounded by industrial on both sides of Mission Road. CMS Recycling began operation in two thousand and eight through the planning oh-eight oh-fourteen, Star Valley Industrial. Again, what they're requesting under the CUP modification is increase operation efficiency, expand the CRV center, enhance internal circulation, consolidate collection and storage of recycled materials. Now I'll get into this a little bit later on in the complex slides. This is the site loaned up. Indicated in the yellow here is the existing site. That is one point eight acres and then the expansion site is one point one eight acres, a total of two point nine acres that they're moving into. This is the existing site here and this is the expansion site here. Looking across Mission Road, north-westernly, you can see this is the entrance of the project here. This is the CR, this is the existing CRV site. This is along the frontage of Mission Road, looking more westernly. Looking north, this is the property line edge right here. So the buildings go across here and so that's the expansion site to the right, existing site to the left. And then right here, looking north directly, is the actual expansion site. You will note that this is a four-foot vinyl wall here, the mill gate, and then also have the serpentine wire. I'll get on to that in a few minutes. So the project proposal is to repurpose existing buildings. As I mentioned to you, this is the existing site here and this is the area for expansion. What they're going to do is currently there's an existing driveway here and what they're doing is they're going to, this is the circulation, it's going to go all the way around here. It's twenty-four feet wide coming around and exit over here. So this is a requirement of the fire department for a twenty-four foot fire access lane, no parking, it'll be signed appropriately. The existing CBR site is right here, it's really small, you can see this right here. What they're doing, they're expanding it, it's almost triple the size of what they're going to be doing now. So this is the new CBR site here for public to come in and bring their recyclables. Again, this is an internal access road here. What I mentioned earlier about administrative adjustment is that along this SR seventy-eight here, the code allows eight-foot high fencing and because of recent vandalism where people have come in on the seventy-eight, cut the, cut the psycho fence and came in and basically stole some of their valuable recyclables. So what they're proposing to do is administrative adjustment through section sixty-one is to increase their fence height from eight feet to ten feet. And then they screen, they took their fencing, they'll have some screen panels and if necessary, some landscaping to screen the operation and the R itself. But again, that's going to be all along the seventy-eight freeway right here on that side. So as I mentioned to you, here's the new CBR parking lot. This is all the additional public spacing. We have handicap spacing there and handicap spacing there. Also the access for the, the closed relocation of the CBR site is going to be a gate here, a gate here and a gate here. So these two gates here will actually function as a kind of a secured area where the public come in and rob off their recyclables as well. One thing about relocating it from the north, the west side of the site to the south is that the, every now that they have some conflicts with the public coming in and talking about their CBR recyclables and the truck traffic, because the truck scale is, the truck scale is located right here. So sometimes there's some conflicts. By relocating it over here so they minimize, it actually almost eliminates the public versus the truck activity on site itself. As I mentioned to you, this is internal circulation. The three buildings that they're doing, there's two buildings, there's one building that sticks out here a little bit to the public right of way, that's going to be removed. There's a building in here that's going to be removed and there's a building along the edge here, along SR seventy-eight that we also removed. Because this is the existing site here and the existing site there, but this has an eight-foot wall to here and then we mentioned about the four-foot vinyl with the serpentine, that's from the, that's an expansion site. So that's all three here. So they're going to remove all the lower vinyl wall, the serpentine, they're going to redo the landscaping and also by taking this building out within the public right of way. So now we have a consistent look along Mission Road. It'll be an eight-foot nice design, a high faster lock with the gates, coming in. So the frontage will be quite a bit enhanced on that. Ten foot screen area I talked to you about and relocation. That's sixty-seven spaces. They've repurposed these spaces, these spaces internally. This is a place facing here. The majority of it's in here for the public facing with the CBR seat site, so. Staff recommendation by commission is to approve PL twenty-three oh-three forty, approving the conditional use permit modification into the expansion site and PL twenty-four oh-two-nine, approving the administrative adjustment, which increases the fence height from eight to ten along SR seventy-eight and we have an extension of the existing facilities. And that includes staff's presentation. Do you have any in this in the audience if something comes up related to operational facilities, maybe you can move to. There's any questions here? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone's here would like to address the commission. Do you have any questions for staff? Right, stand.
Thanks for the thorough staff report and presentation. Got a question about the tubular steel along the freeway side. Is that, is it anticipated to be something similar to the tubular steel? It's kind of to the west and I think it's right there where the, one of the rental yards are. Because they've got a very tall tubular steel that's kind of got, I don't know, bent at the top, so.
I'm not familiar with that for relocation, but what you described in the recent remodel they're going to be doing is a tubular, and it curves towards, towards the freeway. So it may be trying to climb over, it's very difficult for them. But also because it's tubular and you can see through it, one of the conditions we have in the city is that you have to screen it from the freeway and SR seventy-eight. So we put some panels in, there's metal panels in there to go up and help screen the materials inside the R.
Okay. And then that leads to my next question, which would be landscaping along that side. I didn't notice that there was any sort of landscape plan. What are, what are the plans?
There is some landscape plans along the frontage of Mission Road.
Right. I was kind of on the freeway side.
It's determined by the director. Right now, if we go up there and find out that that's not screening enough, then we have a provision, a condition to approval to allow some landscape to be put in there, which would be vines and/or roads to be able to screen it up to the ten feet.
So right now, the panels are going to go up how high?
About eight feet.
Okay.
Plus vines.
Okay. That's not like a big issue for me for the additional landscaping out there primarily is, I drove by there a couple of times trying to look down in there to see exactly what it looked like and trying to pay attention to the traffic and everything. And I'm not looking over there. It's just, it just doesn't work, so. It seems to me like the paneling that would be put up would probably be screening enough, but that's my opinion and the rest of the commission can weigh in on that. There is a requirement that the permit modification shall expire within twenty-four months. Is that intended to make sure that these improvements get done in a timely manner? What happens after twenty-four months? The CUP is still valid, right? Or do they have to come back for a time extension?
Yes. So the twenty-four months is the standard conditional use permit expiration allowance within the zoning code. If an applicant is unable to move their project forward, they can apply for an extension of time through the planning division to obtain extensions on that CUP. If the CUP fell into expiration, then the modification request and the admin adjustment would be expired out. But they have an existing conditional use permit for the recycling facility on the existing portions of the site. That would not be subject to the expiration.
Right. So it does, as long as they implement the CUP, which is get their building permits and do the improvements, then the CUP continues to stay valid indefinitely?
That is correct.
That was the clarification.
You have anything else, Dan?
Yeah, I'm looking through my notes here, apologies.
The commissioner is looking through his notes. I want to do a short follow-up. His point about landscaping on the highway side. You mentioned that if, if after the project is completed, if there's an evaluation that the screening is not adequate, you would apply then landscaping. When would that evaluation be made and who makes the evaluation?
That's the way the condition is written, the director's decision to take a local letter of eye. There's no timeframe. It's basically when the fence is built and see what the screening panels look like from screening from SR seventy-eight. That's only the view we have. So it's, there's no timing assigned to it at this point. It's when the construction of the fence is actually put up during a period of two years. And also keep in mind, and also on the cow friend side, on the fence, that whole house that has used to lift the trees and a bunch of things, so that was also not screened as well.
Okay, I think I had one final question and that was actually on page forty, forty-nine. It's item E at the very, very top, which is related to trash enclosures and the requirement to have, you know, climbing plants or vines and such. Where are the trash enclosures? And the reason I'm asking is, is it even possible with the way this is designed and been operating to even put climbing plants and such adjacent to the trash enclosure?
This condition is particularly applied to when you have it along the edge of a property edge where it's visible from the public. So in this case here, if they're inside, internal to the actual operation, there'd be a hard press to put some landscaping in there to screen it from the employees, but primarily it's a visual thing for the public.
So I'll just lend some clarification to that. So this condition is also allowing the Director of Development Services discretion in assessing that requirement. So as part of every development project of this magnitude, a landscape plan check is required post entitlement. That goes to the engineering division. Planning division staff, engineering staff review the landscape plan for conformance. That's when we evaluate these landscaping related conditions and would exercise the assessment of whether those vines are appropriate or otherwise not appropriate.
Okay. And I appreciate the clarification. I don't, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
On something like this, because it looks like it's growing and expanding and I did see here that one of the goals was to offer diverse jobs for the community. So on the employment aspect, do we have an idea of how many jobs that would create? It's not related to the planning, I was just curious.
That may be something that the applicant asked in the answer to that, but we didn't get into the actual additional point, really the expansion is within the actual storage, use and operation of it, whether or not it's expansion or not employees.
Yeah, hi. Robert Chau, that's owner of CMS recycling. Yeah, the idea is hopefully we have the need to hire more. We are always looking at good people for the staff and we are absolutely as diverse, you know.
To grow the staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have one question. Why would you put palms on the frontage on Mission Road? Just, I know that's a landscaping issue and a problem, like later on.
Yeah, sure.
Palms really do not make sense. We're talking, looking at shade trees, trying to cool the city.
Yeah. When we, in, was it oh-eight oh-ten, when we first did it, those were approved. So we're going to take them down in the existing and put in new landscape across the whole, off the street path approved by the city and take them home.
Is that really, okay, thank you. That's it. I had the same other questions about the barrier.
Commissioner Barbe, Chair Barbe, to clarify, there is a condition of approval within the project that stipulates the applicant will sub out the palm trees for a tree on the street, the city's street tree list.
Yes. So I had some questions about that too, that there's a condition, a landscape plan be submitted, but there is a landscape plan that was submitted. That's just a conceptual plan, part of their initial project review. When they, C planner mentioned that when they come through for the permits, put the wall up and landscaping and stuff, they'll have to come in and submit a final landscape plan with irrigation and at that point, time will make any adjustments necessary. Yeah, but have we, do we really do that on previous projects?
Yes. So as conditioned, they'll need to submit for the landscape plan check post entitlement process. And there is, as stated earlier, I'm sorry, I think I said Chair Barbe, I meant Vice Chair Barbe. There is a requirement to modify the trees accordingly in compliance with our approved street tree list, but we do evaluate the landscaping through that formal landscape plan check process.
Okay.
Further.
So I remember a project on the other side of seventy-eight had this, it was very similar to this, that any landscaping done on the applicant's property wasn't going to be visible because it was below the grade of the freeway. And that was in the original package presented to the planning commission and we said, no, we moved the requirement for landscaping along the seventy-eight. So I'm looking at this and I'm thinking that this project is being treated differently. That project, it brought, the landscaping plan was part of the package, but in this case, it's not part of the package and it's TBD. And I, I don't want to put a burden on the applicant with a TBD when he, he won't know, he won't know what his landscaping requirements are until a guy shows up and he thinks he's all, he thinks he's all done. And I guess I don't, I don't want to do that to business owner. I'd like us, I'd like us to either take out a condition for landscaping along seventy-eight or do something else so that, so that when he leaves here tonight, he knows what his landscaping requirements are back there.
If I may, Chair Paul, to clarify, is your concern primarily with just the seventy-eight frontage or landscaping overall?
Well, overall, I think we're only, we're going to require it in the, along Mission and he's going to move his wall back and he's going to re-landscape that. And I think that that's great. So my only concern is right, is along the seventy-eight where it's not going to be visible and, and we, and we're not telling him whether he needs it or not. I think we should, when he leaves here tonight, he should know that he doesn't need to landscape along the seventy-eight.
Thank you for that clarification.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion? Anyone?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd motion approve this project. Sorry, I don't have the number on another page. And, and remove the requirement for landscaping along the seventy-eight edge.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Voting has been opened. You refresh your screens. The motion has been approved, seven to zero.
Good luck, Chair.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chavez, I wanted to say what I've done business at your facility and from your personnel, I've got better service than some maîtrises that I've tipped in Las Vegas. I wanted to let you know that I thought it was exceptional.
Thank you very much. It's definitely our core values. We appreciate all our customers very much. Thank you for visiting us. I hope you'll come back. It's going to be amazing.
I've got big enough room for my truck, I will.
Yeah, we will, we will. Thank you.
Okay, next item is PL twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-seven, changes to Article forty, sixty-one, sixty-four and sixty-five. And is there any requirement for disclosure for this kind of change?
Not that I'm aware of. City attorney, any weigh in on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Chair. Paul, good evening, Commissioners. I'm a former senior planner with the planning division and I will be presenting on PL twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-seven, which is a request for a zone text amendment to amend Article forty, sixty-one, sixty-four and sixty-five as a result of the dissolution of the historic preservation motion. So here's some brief background to how we got here today. On August nineteenth, twenty-twenty, the city council formed a boards and commissions subcommittee to evaluate various city boards and commissions. As a part of that effort, they recommended uniform bylaws for most of the boards and commissions with the exception of the planning commission and the library board trustees. On April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, development services staff presented the concept of dissolving the historic preservation commission to the subcommittee. The recommendation was really born out of this, this difficulty with getting quorum for the HPC and the professional qualifications that are required for the city to be considered what's called the certified local government, also known as a CLG. Throughout twenty-twenty-three, the subcommittee continued observing the HPC and ultimately recommended dissolution to the full city council. And on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the city council adopted ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-three, dissolving the HPC. Some of the key historic preservation items that the HPC oversaw were the certificate of appropriateness, which is required for external modifications to historic resources, the local register of historic places, which is a document that's maintained by the city and is used to identify structures or resources that warrant additional protections. There are benefits of being placed on the local register. Placement on a local register qualifies a property to be listed on the California Register of Historical Places and the National Register of Historic Places. You're also afforded specific incentives such as off-street parking reductions and Mills Act contracts. We'll go into details to what those are later. All projects that require certificate of appropriateness are required to comply with the design guidelines for historic resources, which was last updated in two thousand and two and was included as an attachment to the staff report. The last component is the maintenance of the survey, which was last done in two thousand and one. Initially done in nineteen eighty-three, the two thousand and one was an update to that survey and labeled structures as they're individually significant, significant contributors or non-contributors. Here's a brief summary of the text amendments that we are proposing to amend. Article forty, obviously, delegation of historic preservation responsibilities. Article sixty-one, which allows the zoning administrator to list and remove resources to the local register. Article sixty-four, which empowers planning commission and city staff to conduct design review on specific major projects. And Article sixty-five, which concerns the old Escondido neighborhood, also referred to as OEM, which clarifies the appeal process for city staff decisions. This was included as an attachment to the city council report dated February twenty-first. There are nine primary responsibilities of the HPC. Designating local register or local landmarks, rescinding the landmark status or the local register status, designation of historic district, certificates of appropriateness, known as specifically for major projects, certificates of appropriateness with a discretionary action, emergency demolition permits, non-emergency demolition permits for non-significant structures, non-emergency demolitions for significant resources and Mills Act contracts. The middle column identifies the current final authority on actions with the proposed final authority on action in the last column. Throughout the staff report, we'll be discussing specifically three items that the HPC would see regularly. That is item one, item four and item nine. So the first item is designation of a resource on the local register. The first question that we ask is, is your property on the two thousand and one historic survey? If it's yes, then you would provide supplemental information justifying the placement of the structure on the survey. A criteria is identified in Article forty. If there is sufficient information justifying listing, then you would schedule a meeting with the zoning administrator, which is the director of development services or their designee. In our research of surrounding cities, we found that several cities, specifically the city of Chula Vista, also uses their zoning administrator for delegate, for designation of historic resources on the local register. If your property is not on the historic survey, you would go the other way. Is your building fifty years of age at least? If no, then typically you're ineligible for listing. Fifty years is the cutoff. However, there is language in the existing code and in the revised code that allows the ZA to consider structures that are forty-five years or older. That's been there since, is an original text and we'll continue to maintain that. If your building is fifty years of age, you would provide what's called the DPR form, since we don't have a two thousand and one historic survey. The DPR form is essentially a analysis of the building, their defining features and whether or not the structure maintains its integrity. Then they would provide supplemental information and we would schedule the zoning administrator meeting for listing, which happens during a public meeting. The second item is the certificate of appropriateness for major projects. As you can see, the existing review process for major projects essentially required design review by the historic preservation commission on every property within the OEM, was falling under a major project. In the context of streamlining reviews for buildings and for historic resources, we evaluated this in the context of street lining and making sure that we are protecting the most important resources within the city. Those are, what staff identified to be the utmost significance are those that are on the local register and within the old Escondido neighborhood. The planning commission would be responsible for conducting design review only specifically on those properties, those that are on the local register and within the OEM. If you are on the local register outside of the OEM, then it would be staff design review with an approval, with an option to elevate to the planning commission. And so, and it would continue for all other historic resources. The criteria for that is specifically the design guidelines for homeowners of historic resources. The director would review it in that, against those guidelines. The director didn't feel that it was, if that was a project that we could approve out of staff, well, they could elevate it to the planning commission for review. Here you will see the number of properties that are either on the survey or within the local, or on the local register. And as I said specifically earlier, you know, we evaluated the, the significance of the resource, what deserved the most protection. Obviously, those that are identified on the local register and within the OEM require additional scrutiny, hence the requirement for planning commission design review. Other items or other resources, while they do deserve additional review, there's always an option to elevate that to the planning commission if necessary. As stated earlier, the only projects that the planning commission would be responsible for reviewing are those that are considered major projects for properties on the local register and within the OEM. On the right, what you see is the, the boundary of the old Escondido neighborhood and the green is all properties that are identified on the local register. In theory, the planning commission would be responsible for reviewing projects, major projects on these properties. There's about two hundred and eighty-three resources on the local register. In the last year, city staff took In the last year, city staff took seven design reviews to the HPC, so to give you an idea of what we could foresee the Planning Commission reviewing in the context of design reviews. As I stated, there are several incentives that property owners of historic resources can take advantage of. One is the Mills Act contracts, also known as Historic Preservation Property Agreements. So here's a really quick flow chart as to how you get to the Mills Act. If you are an unlisted property, you can apply for local register designation, which would go to the zoning administrator. If you are on the register, you can apply for a Mills Act contract, which would be overseen by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's responsibility in that would just provide staff with feedback on the list of improvements that are included in the Mills Act contracts in addition to approving the Mills Act contracts. One of the things that we received from the City Council Subcommittee was that the City Council was not, was comfortable with delegating execution of Mills Act contracts to city staff. And so we wrote the code to allow for the city manager or their designee to execute those act contracts. So the Planning Commission would provide us feedback. We would get approval. The city manager or their designee would sign it, and they would take it to the county for evaluation. Moving forward, these are the Planning Commission's responsibilities. Conducting design review for properties listed on the local register and within the Old Escondido Neighborhood. Obviously, staff would provide an analysis of the changes that are being proposed and give any historical background for the property. Review and advise on Mills Act contracts. Both items, number one and two, are non-public hearing items, just to note. For eligible properties, the third item is a review request for demolition of a significant historic resource, which would be a public hearing. This, for this item, the Planning Commission would be providing a recommendation to the full City Council for issuance of the demolition permit. And this is for properties that are on the local register, and they, they're not on an emergency demo. So there is no catastrophic event. They just want to demolish the property for redevelopment or other work. And the final item is Certificate of Appropriateness is associated with the discretionary action. So any item that the Planning Commission already reviews, conditional use permits, planned development permits, the Planning Commission would continue reviewing the CVA as a part of that application. There's, there are several outreach efforts done by the City Clerk's Office. On November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, during the Historic Preservation Commission, the City Clerk's Office did notify the Commission that the Boards and Commissions Subcommittee was going to recommend dissolution to the full City Council. On or around January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, we did notify the Old Escondido Neighborhood Group that the City Council was going to dissolve the Historic Preservation Commission and then in addition to the notice requirements of the SPDIDO Code for this specific project. As of today, you know, I believe we've received one public comment, but we've not received any other comments on the previous efforts identified. Based on the analysis contained in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash zero five, recommending approval of the project to the City Council. The staff is ready for, is here for any questions that the Commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the public that wants to speak on this? Nope. Okay. Do you have any questions for our staff?
Yes, I do. So you mentioned that we are going to be involved in the reviewing recommendations on the Mills Act. But could you be more specific on what we would be reviewing and what our input would be?
Yes. So typically, what staff would do is we would work with an applicant on the contents of the Mills Act contract, and we would identify improvements that the, well, the applicant would identify improvements. So whether that's a re-roof, it's typically associated with external modifications of the structure. If there's repairs that they foresee themselves doing in the next ten years, which is the typical lifespan of a Mills Act contract, whether that's foundation, changes to the foundation for the home. Staff would then provide a recommendation to the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission would take in what we provide as photos and the list of improvements. And at that point, it's really just a dialogue as to whether or not those improvements are necessary and working with the applicant on changes that are necessary for approval of the Mills Act contract.
Thank you. Now, I know that the reasoning to move much of the review process and approval process is going to staff for administrative decisions because the City Council wants to try to cut red tape, help expedite projects, and save applicants money. Has staff anticipated at all what the possible savings in both time and cost to an applicant might be?
As a part of this effort, we've not assessed what those, what that time and cost saving would be, specifically as it relates to certificates of appropriateness. Given that we are now delegating a lot of the projects that would necessarily go to the HPC, you know, that requires a staff report, that requires a collection of a fee that we would still be collecting as a part of this review process. But we haven't done a full assessment of the cost savings and times that would result from the delegation responsibility.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Anyone else have any questions? So we were offered a staff, a review by staff, so some of us don't have questions because we already had the option.
My colleague discussed the moving of discretionary process to administrative process. My question is in relation to recourse for the property owner. Is it, is it correct that the designation of lists was not previously a zoning administrator task but a historic preservation task or committee task?
So yeah, designation of a property on the local register was a Historic Preservation Commission task. And in consultation with our, one of our staff members, through the staff augmentation, Vikram Chima, in discussions with him, and you know, he is somebody who meets the standards, the secondary standard, standard, interior standards for historic preservation, we felt that the zoning administrator would be the most appropriate body to act on local register items.
I wouldn't disagree with that, but my question is in relation to what recourse would the property owner have if we move from discretionary to administrative and he has disagreement with the result? Would he, what recourse would he?
We would require authorization from the property owner to be listed on the local register. We wouldn't, the city wouldn't take the proactive effort unless there's a direction from council for us to start identifying structures to be listed on the local register. We do require property owner authorization as a part of it.
Thank you.
If I may also interject, Commissioner Spear. If a property owner or applicant did not agree with the zoning administrator's decision, they could appeal that decision to Planning Commission.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? No public speakers? Do I have a motion?
I will, I will mention that I was leery when I first heard that the committee was going to be dissolved and that certain duties were going to be sent over to city staff. But, in fact, I was actually nervous about it. But I believe staff has worked well in developing a good balancing act, and I believe we still have the tools we need to help preserve the integrity of these neighborhoods. I see these neighborhoods as a living museum and a tribute to our heritage. So I will move approval of staff report.
Second. And the voting has been opened. You refresh your screens up. The vote is seven to zero to recommend approval to City Council. Okay, and I still see people in the audience, so now I know why they're here. Okay, next item, current business, PL twenty-three dash zero four one one, short-term rental ordinance. And does anyone have a disclosure? All right, and I guess I, I guess I do. I live fairly close to a short-term rental, so I asked the city attorney for their opinion, and they said it affected me economically and I would, should abstain, but I can't, I don't even see how this ordinance would affect economically the value of that home. Never mind affect the value of my home. So I don't think I need to abstain. Staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Schennig. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city of Escondido, and with me is my colleague Pedro.
Thank you, Commissioners. Pedro Cardenas, Management Analyst, Economic Development.
In this evening's presentation, we'll be reviewing a draft ordinance for short-term rentals in the city of Escondido. And while no action is required from the Planning Commission this evening, we would like your feedback on this item. In this presentation, we will review what the current municipal code says about short-term rentals. We will look at the goals for the short-term rental program that we considered when creating this ordinance. We'll review the three parts to implementing a short-term rental program in the city, review the program process and timeline to date. We will spend the majority of the presentation going through the details of the proposed ordinance, talk about next steps, and then open it for feedback and discussion. Today, our city municipal code is silent on the topic of short-term rentals, meaning they are not allowed or not allowed in our city. As a result, there are currently one hundred and eighty-one short-term rentals operating inside the city boundaries. We took a look at other cities and wanted to see what was allowed and what wasn't allowed. In the city of Oceanside, for example, they do have an ordinance, and they recently limited no host locations only to coastal zones. And this is their permit fee, two hundred and fifty dollars plus a one hundred and ninety-nine dollar inspection fee. In the city of San Marcos, they are not permitted, but there is no additional fine. In the city of Temecula, they are not permitted. There are fines incurred at one thousand dollars per day if somebody does try to operate a short-term rental. In Poway, there is currently no regulation. In Vista, their code is also silent. So what were the goals in looking at this ordinance? So the first was to keep people safe. Unregulated lodging accommodations could present unsafe conditions for guests and/or neighbors. We wanted to create a pathway for complaints. Today, there is no mechanism for a citizen to call the city and for the city to record, for the city to record that complaint as related to a short-term rental property. We still respond to those complaints through co-compliance or through the police department. And also, we wanted to make sure that housing was reserved for long-term housing for our residents. The City Council adopted the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which prioritizes land within the city for jobs and also for housing. And in addition, the city has an opportunity to capture ongoing revenue from the transient occupancy tax generated by these short-term rentals. There are three parts to implementing a short-term rental program. As I mentioned, this evening, we'll be reviewing just one of these. That is the short-term rental ordinance that actually defines what it is, what it is not, and what the violation process and revocation process would be. The second is to update Chapter twenty-five, Article four of the municipal code, which includes language for which entities are charged transient occupancy tax. And the third is the implementation of a short-term rental third-party contract for software and for services. So the software would be an easy-to-use platform for applicants with support staff available in multiple languages to assist with the application process and payments, and also a phone number to call for complaints. So people can look at the website, the city's website, find the phone number, and call them, call us as a city. In addition, city staff will be given easy-to-view monthly and annual reports about the local short-term rental market. And please note that this is a multi-department effort between economic development, development services, information systems staff, and others. And we will work together to implement, monitor, and use the new system. This is an overview of the process that we've gone through to get to this point this evening. This started in September twenty twenty-two after the request from the Economic Development Subcommittee, which consists of the mayor and councilmember Garcia to explore a short-term rental ordinance for our city due to several community complaints related to short-term rentals, mostly related to noise and parking. And through this process, the city hired a consultant, Granicus, to help craft the ordinance based on best practices throughout the entire nation. This draft was created, and also it went to the Economic Development Subcommittee for initial review and feedback. A public meeting at the Subcommittee was held for additional public feedback. Throughout this entire process, there was a survey open. That survey is still open, and we're still collecting feedback. And this evening is the presentation to the Planning Commission, after which it will go to City Council for adoption. As I mentioned, there has been a community feedback survey open, and I wanted to provide just a few data points of what we're hearing. Of the one hundred and eighty-six survey responses we've collected so far, eight point six respondents said they operate at least one short-term rental in the city of Escondido. We have heard that there are owners that operate multiple. And forty-two point six of respondents indicated they have had complaints or issues with short-term rentals. And again, one of the goals of the program was to create a pathway to document the complaints that are specific to short-term rentals. That website is engageescondido.org-short-term-rentals. So now I will hand it over to my colleague Pedro to talk through the various aspects of the ordinance.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'll review the ordinance in full and go over all the components of what is in the ordinance. Starting with the purpose. The purpose of this chapter is to regulate privately-owned residential dwellings within the city used as short-term rentals. And this is to ensure that transient occupancy taxes, TOT, are paid and collected and minimize the potential negative effects of short-term rental units on surrounding residential neighborhoods. The city does reserve the right to change that regulation, providing this chapter at any time. And anyone accepting a short-term rental permit, unit permit pursuant to this chapter acknowledges and accepts that possibility. The ordinance starts off with some standard definitions ranging from advertisement to transient occupancy tax. Advertisement meaning any online or internet-based offers or solicitations. So anything on Airbnb or VRBO, for example. It defines what a guest, who a guest for transient is. And also defines what a host is. So host meaning an owner of a dwelling unit that rents the residency for transient occupancy. You'll also see throughout this presentation ineligible units. So ineligible unit shall not be permitted in accessory dwelling units, ADUs, or junior ADUs, as well as units created utilizing an SV nine application in inclusionary housing or other income restricted housing units. It also defines short-term rentals as any portion of a residential dwelling unit which is advertised or held out to the public that is rented for the duration of thirty consecutive days or less. So hotels, motels, and other land uses are explicitly defined and regulated in municipal code separately from what a short-term rental is, as well as defining what transient occupancy tax is as it relates to Chapter twenty-five of the municipal code. In order to operate a short-term rental unit here in the city of Escondido, we are proposing that there are three different types of permits that are required to operate. The first being an Escondido business license. The second, the actual short-term rental permit. And we'll go over in detail what would be required in that, in that permit, as well as a transient occupancy tax registration certificate. Going into eligibility. In order to be eligible for a short-term unit, we define which housing units will be eligible for short-term rentals. Short-term rentals will be allowed in single-family detached homes, duplexes, two-family and three-family dwelling units, and townhomes. There will be limitations on multifamily housing. In buildings that have two to fifty units, there will be one short-term rental permit allowed. In buildings fifty-one to ninety-nine units, two short-term rental permits will be allowed. Anything with a hundred or more units, two percent of total units, or five short-term rental permits, whichever is fewer. Now, when it comes to multifamily housing and short-term rentals, there will be no limit. There's going to be a maximum of twenty-five short-term rental permits citywide for multifamily housing units. Overall, there will be a limit on short-term rental permits in single-family homes as well, so citywide. And that will be a maximum of two percent of the total housing units within the city. Currently, there's approximately forty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight units in the city. So two percent of that would be approximately nine hundred and forty-two units. On average, we're seeing that this lines up with what other cities have for, for limit, or limits. So that also ranges from two to seven percent. If we do, in the case that we do reach that limit, a waiting list will be maintained if applications exceed that, exceed that percentage. Again, there will be restrictions on what types of units short-term rentals will be allowed in. Again, they will not be permitted in ADUs or junior ADUs or any inclusionary housing or other income restricted units, as well as units created, units created utilizing SV nine application. or other income restricted units, as well as units created utilizing SV nine applications. There will also be a distance limit between short-term rentals and a neighborhood. So no short-term rental permit shall be issued for any housing unit if the unit's parcel is within five hundred feet of a parcel that currently permitted short-term rental unit. The distances are going to be measured from the closest property line of the property containing the currently permitted short-term rental unit to the closest property line of the proposed short-term rental unit. And this is going to be measured using the Escondido Geographic Information System. Moving on to what the application and the processing requirements will look like for short-term rental permits. Again, we want to reiterate that in order to operate, you will need a business license and a transient occupancy tax certificate. What will be within the short-term rental permit? This will be on a form that the city will provide to applicants. It will require information, which includes owner's name, address, email, phone number, and the proposed dwelling unit's details. It'll also state the occupancy limit. So there will be a limit to two guests per bedroom in any dwelling, plus two additional guests overall. So they will have to put that occupancy limit within their short-term rental. They also need to designate a responsible contact person that is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to respond to complaints. And they must attest that their unit is not defined as an ineligible unit. They will also need to pay the fees. That will be established by city council resolution, and we'll go into the details of what those fees amounts are later in the presentation. If there are any changes or renewals, if there are any changes with property ownership, a host must notify the city within thirty days. A new permit will be required for a continued short-term rental if it changes ownership, and we will not issue or renew a permit with any unresolved city code compliance cases or that has outstanding fines, fees, or leads. We will also, our co-compliance department will also conduct inspections prior to issuance of a short-term rental, and they'll also conduct an inspection for renewals as well. Application may be denied for those who prior suspended or revoked short-term rental permits. Moving on to the expiration of renewal section. So short-term rental permits are going to be valid the same amount of time with the associated business license. Again, they are not transferable, and they are tied to the original rental site, and they will automatically expire upon property sale. If a host wants to renew their permit, they must pay the renewal fee and transient occupancy tax certificate. They must also verify that they do not have any outstanding code cases as it relates to their short-term rental permit. If they fail to renew, they will have a five-day grace period, and the city will keep that into consideration. Moving on to operational requirements. A host must be responsive. Again, they will designate a responsible contact that will be available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to respond within one hour to complaints regarding their rental unit. And a prompt response is required for any loud, noisy, disturbances, or disorderly conduct or violations. When it comes to advertising, they must not advertise their short-term rental unit if they do not have a short-term rental permit. They must also display their city-issued short-term rental permit number on the online advertisement included hosting platforms. Also reiterating the occupancy limits. Again, that's two people per bedroom plus two additional extra. And there is a limit of one booking per day per property, and booking may involve renting one or more bedrooms for the entire house. Additionally, no additional parking will be required. They may use the existing onsite parking O S. Continuing on with operational requirement, they must also not disrupt, a host must not disrupt the residential neighborhood, a character's neighborhood, so they can't make any changes to their facade as it relates to their short-term rental. They still need to go through the proper approval channels, and they must stay in compliance with municipal code provisions, including noise and property maintenance. They also must comply with waste management as it relates to our municipal codes, solid waste and recycling containers, so providing adequate trash. And this is strictly for short-term rentals, so a host may not use their short-term rental for any kind of events such as weddings, banquets, or other personal or corporate events. No short-term rental permits are also not going to be allowed in areas not approved for residential use. So for example, they will not be allowed in vehicles, sheds, trailers, or garages, or any temporary structures. Within their unit, they must display their short-term rental permit, their responsible contact information, maximum overnight occupants, the rules and schedules for trash, storage, noise, and parking, as well as share the local emergency information. They must also comply with the TOT chapter and omit the taxes that are due to the city. When it comes to record-keeping duties, the host must keep their records for a period of four years, and the tax administrator for the city has the right to request those records at any reasonable time. A host must keep these records at their level. Moving on to violations, this is the tail end of the ordinance. A violation will be considered a public nuisance in this chapter and subject to the provisions of noise and property maintenance in our municipal code. The city may issue a notice of violation of occupants, owners, and operators, and they may suspend or revoke the license upon any violation of the provision. The fines will be as follows: a thousand for the first conviction, three thousand dollars for the second within twelve months, and five thousand for the third within twelve months. And administrative citations and criminal penalties are possible. There's also tax-related violations that they do not comply and omit the appropriate tax. They will also be subject to violations. When it comes to multiple violations, each day of violation will be considered a separate violation. And any serious violations will call for immediate revocation of their permit, and I'll go into detail in the next slide. This is the last section of the ordinance, and it clearly defines what the revocation process is. So if there are major violations when it comes to actions jeopardizing public safety, violating licensing requirements, or involving criminal activities such as felonies onsite or non-payment of taxes, any of these violations would call for immediate revocation of the short-term rental permit. Any lower-level violations will call for a three-strikes rule. So three documented violations within a year will then lead to the immediate revocation of a short-term rental permit. A host is able to reapply after the revocation period, although there will be a thorough review of their compliance history, and additional measures may be required. Ultimately, it will be up to the city, the city's discretion, on whether or not they will be eligible for a new permit. Lastly, they will also be eligible for appeals through the normal appeals process as listed in the business license chapter of our municipal code.
That completes the review of the ordinance. So the next steps are, one, we're continuing to collect public comment and feedback. The draft ordinance is available for public view at engageescondido.org-short-term-rentals. The anticipated permit cost will be full-cost recovery, two hundred and fifty dollars plus an initial property inspection fee of two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Anticipated initial revenue from the TOT generated from permissible rental units is approximately three hundred thousand dollars per year to the city's general fund, and the city may collect TOT for the previous three years of operation upon initiation of the program. The target city council meeting date for this item is April seventeenth. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time, and we welcome feedback and comment.
All right, thank you very much. Public comments.
We've received three requests to speak from the public. If anybody has not filled out one of these yellow requests to speak forms, please feel free to fill it out and bring it to me. For now, the first person to request to speak was Melissa, I'll just forget it's wrong, Chikurna.
You'll have to forgive me, I'm new to this, so...
Sure, come on down. You have three minutes.
I'm here today, Melissa Chikurna. I'm here today to ask the commission to consider adding to their ordinance restrictions on proximity to schools, or schools in places of playgrounds for children for these short-term rentals. Due to the transient nature of these buildings or these residents, there's no way to know who's staying in these properties. I am a resident in a neighborhood that is about a quarter mile from an elementary school. We have two known short-term rentals where they actually do child pickup and drop-off every day in front of the property. Based on what they're recommending here, we would have up to fourteen, sixteen people in and out of those buildings every three to four days. And so it's just as hard as a mother in seeing these kids and knowing that we don't know where our neighbors are, and there's no way, there's no regulations in Airbnb or VRBO, even on their websites, they clearly state they have no idea who's coming in and out of these properties. In addition, you know, we live in a residential neighborhood, and we have neighbors, and we're not zoned for commercial property. And so I would like to see language put in there that states that there's a maximum number of days they can be renting these properties, so that we do have a static neighbor, someone that is a part of our community, that we can take our complaints or voice our concerns or know who's coming in and out of these houses. For instance, the two properties in my specific neighborhood have been retrofitted to be playgrounds. I have a gear pong table five feet from my fence. I have a four-car garage next door full of pinball machines and arcade machines, along with two sets of cornhole bags, a volleyball net, I mean, a four-hole putting green, and this is all in a quarter acre of a backyard, five feet from my residence. So it's been made clear to me by the owner and the operator of that property, their intent to have it booked fully year-round, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, with a minimum stay of three days or four over the weekend. So imagine the sheer quantity of neighbors I'm going to have during that time. Thank you.
Very much. You have a question? Ma'am? Ma'am? Could you come in?
Are you in the old Escondido neighborhood by chance?
I'm not. I'm in Carros.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Our next request to speak came from a Tyler fellow. Apologize again.
My wife's going to go first.
Okay. So, Ms. Laurie?
Hello, I'm Lorie. Thank you for hearing me today. I just want to tell you that I've lived in this video for nearly twenty years. My husband, well over thirty years. We own property, we pay taxes, our children have gone to school here. We're not some special interest group trying to ruin our community or neighborhood. Our family actually goes on grand every weekend. We go to the parks and attractions in the community. This is where we call home. Having a short-term rental allows us to do things that we would not otherwise be able to do in part of our livelihood and how we support our family despite the rising costs of food, gas, and taxes. We have one short-term rental, which is within our basement of our primary home, so we have full visibility on everything that goes on. It allows us to make a better life in the face of rising economic challenges. The proposed ordinance hinders our goals and hopes for the future by severely limiting our income as well as our autonomy in managing our own property, diminishing what we have worked so hard to build. I've thoroughly reviewed the proposed ordinance and have many concerns, and I would like to provide some information for this committee to consider, as well as address some items that were overlooked. My background is in data analytics and process improvement for the past fifteen years. So the information that I prepare is not simply a plea to reduce taxes, but to simply consider the implications of the proposed ordinance to ensure all opportunities and challenges are presented for all of those that are impacted. So just to give you a quick statistic, this was on doorloop.com, approximately forty-five percent of hosts reported that short-term rentals were instrumental in meeting their financial needs. And that brings me to the first point, excessive costs and fees. The proposed ordinance includes a business license in addition to permit costs. So there are cities, San Diego, for example, with the county of San Bernardino, where they only have a permit. So my question is, what is the evidence to support these costs and fees differ from the other two examples previously stated? Are they more in line to better serve the community than the city of San Diego or San Bernardino County? Additionally, I want you to consider the business license tax permitting fees that will also be on top of the transient tax and the state tax that is pending. There is the California Senate bill by a corporal rule impose a fifteen percent tax on short-term rentals. This would be in addition to the ten percent transient tax, which would equate to a twenty-five percent tax. So I don't have it in front of me, I'm going to pass it out afterwards just to show what that impact is to overall for someone who operates a single couple of Airbnbs. I also want to understand how the business license fee will be applied to short-term rentals. The business license, which I'm not very familiar with, looked like it was based on gross receipts, but for rental income, it's a little more complicated because there's so many expenses that offset that, such as mortgage, interest, insurance, property taxes, cleaning, I can go on and on. And I want to kind of understand how this would be impacted, having a business license for something such as this. I don't file taxes as a business license. It's actually considered passive income activity. I have one unit, it's very small, so having something as a business license is actually completely opposite of what we're currently doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Did you have a question? Can you, ma'am? Ma'am?
Thank you. Questions for you. You mentioned the onerous, and you began to just explain some of this, but what would be your top two, in your view, of onerous provisions that this ordinance proposes?
I think the cost is number one. I didn't get to the gen to kind of talk about the full impact of that, and then the considerable government oversight and control. It's talking about us not being able to paint the exterior of our home. It's talking about, you know, what we're required for insurance. It's talking about their permission to enter a rental as a business license. They can at any time, at any reasonable time, enter a unit. I'm curious how that violates privacy and, you know, guests' rights. So there's quite a few things. Like I said, I have a list, and I'll provide you several pages of some of my concerns. And my husband will actually expand on some more that I wasn't able to touch on.
It's helpful, thank you, I appreciate it.
I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thinking for Tyler?
I have, you know, we only planned seven, but I guess there's more to come for us next term for being here. So I mean, I guess a couple of things that, you know, I wanted to point out at least from the presentation. I mean, I don't think it's a mystery to most of us. I've been here for thirty years. I'm a product of Escondido, went to the same areas, middle school, I went to Escondido High School, graduated from Cal State San Marcos, bought my home here, I'm staying here. My son, that you commented on, thank you for that, I'm trying to raise a good family here, but we have plenty of long-term rentals. I mean, look at the one across from me, it's the Roman, we got Alco, we got a whole customer hospital, country clubs. I don't think the long-term rental is really that strong of a case if this is going to hinder. We talked, I mean, as far as some of the safety issues, you know, telling that we have to host in front of our home that we operate a long-term rental. But I also think it's something that's alien to any of us, that crime is not, you know, our most glamorous point, transients are not also are a big concern. So advertising something at the front of my home jeopardizing the safety of my family. I'm a father as well. I mean, we operate a very strict policy at our house. We are a super host. We have over two hundred and sixty reviews, five-star reviews. So if there's anything that somebody steps out of line, we are there immediately to handle it. So that was one thing that it's unclear how the different, treatment of different types of rentals, so ones that, you know, have hosts that are not onsite versus hosts that are onsite. I think those are some things that should be considered and looked at and treated differently. Respectfully, I do have some concerns as far as city implementation and oversight. I've already had the city try to issue a citation on me for not having a business license for this something in particular. So training as far as your staff is something that's very concerning to me. In addition, we were part of the group that helped probably this commission and the council to build the ADUs in the city of Escondido that were attached. That was a complete arduous process, and also had a city worker try to stop our project by lying. And I provide you guys with that documentation for your review. But so that part I'm definitely concerned about. Again, I am one of Escondido's biggest proponents. I can still remember cheers from people from college bad talking crap about our city, and it still bothers me today, but I have a lot of pride in my city, and that's why I still live here and call it home. So again, you know, some of the evidence that was provided as far as emails from folks, I mean, I think it definitely seems to be pretty one-sided, that it appears that it's all, like I said, special interest, or folks not just trying to provide for a family. I don't think it's also unclear that you really have hustle nor to live in Southern California and try to find any way that you can support your family and stay here, so... So.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, we're happy to answer. But we'll provide this, you guys can make copies for any answers, so. Thank you.
You have another speaker, Alex.
We have a Mary Smith.
Hi, my name is Mary Smith. I'm a mother and I've consulted on long term rentals in Escondido. My family moved here when I was two years old. I grew up at Escondido and have the privilege to move away from it ever since then. I've lived in several states. But my husband and I decided to raise our family and settle down in Escondido. We trust that in a private residential area, we'll be compliant with neighbors and each other and look after one another. I did not choose to live next to a public health or vice versa, or conference center, which is a current and current rental in our community. I'm a recent student and my politics commission has been on short term rentals. I recommend the short term rentals that a family can advance to my radius of school districts to prepare for children. Great parking, occupancy limits are ten, occupancy is no more than two persons per room, whichever is building. Required short term rentals to the owners of primary residence have limited rentals to one hundred and forty days per year. Limit to one person in total of units in our city. Required permits may seem to rent out our resolution rentals. And of course, occupancy costs on short term rentals and of course, crimes and online compliance. And additionally, include the communication that's proposed. Again, short term rentals are created under our community and a cure for safety for children and local children with school districts due to increased traffic and features coming into our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else would like a chance to speak?
Oh yes, we have one more request from a client, Maury.
I live next to a short term rental. This is an anecdote of what I've never heard of in the Black King, trying to live next to a short term rental. It seems to me a valid zoning, the point of zoning is that we assured activities within certain areas and short term rentals are very much like a hotel with lots of people, you know, new people every day or every couple of days. From my experience, vacationers, we all know this, they act very differently than residents. You know, you're there on vacation, you want to have fun, you want to take it back, you want to enjoy, you want to do whatever you like to do on vacation, you want to have a party. And so whoever lives next to a short term rental tends to have that next door, if you're a man. I didn't choose to live next to one, I moved in after we moved there. And, you know, it would have been a consideration that I would not come on and live there. Just a couple more items. You never know who's there, you may have a short term person who's there who's fine, who's quiet the next day. You may have somebody who's really loud or spinning donuts in the cul-de-sac or something like that. We've had, we've had those things happen. So I never know, you know, my kids are going to be out front, who's going to pull up a car, they're speeding. You know, if it's a neighbor, you kind of know who's there, you know what's going on. Because you go on a day to day, week to week, year round basis. I think that big businesses will take advantage of this. And we talked about, hey, this is something you can do for your home, but people are going to take advantage of it. I mean, if, you know, a large hotel organization were here pushing to work, we'd all be very wary of it. But that's what's going to happen, right? Hotels are in hotels right now because we've made them stay in hotel districts and those sort of areas. I do, if we do a lot of short term rentals, which I am against, I think they need to be very limited. If it's owner occupied, you have someone to talk to. If it's not owner occupied, you never see this person. You never get to, you know, get in contact with them. I work with a rental manager that's not the owner. I looked up who owns the property based on public records. Someone who got an owner occupied loan for the home, they've never lived there, but they rented it out from day one. So that seems to be against a lot of them as far as I understand, fraud of some sort. And so I also second, you know, schools, it does change the, just changes if you get more traffic. You get more transients, you get more activities, you want to expect in that area, so. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right, guys, questions of staff?
Yes, staff.
So again, so I'm sorry, again, we, the staff did provide an opportunity for staff report, for meeting with them. And so some of us took advantage of that and don't have any other questions. But we'll start with Carrie.
A couple of questions for you. One is, just so I'm clear, city council is voting on this to say yes or no? Is that basically yes to the ordinance or no to the ordinance?
Correct, and there's still an opportunity for city staff to make modifications before that presentation. And there's opportunities for the city council to recommend modifications before.
Okay, so the feedback that you've been getting from the public, what is it? Is it mostly opposed, mostly for? Can you give me an idea of what percentage you're, you're receiving from the public?
So the comments we've received online and via email are very similar to the comments we heard tonight from the public. We have individuals who, it ranges widely from people who do not want them in the city to people who operate them and want them in the city, to people who don't realize we currently have any in our city and think we're trying to allow it for the first time. So the comments range widely, but we did see that forty-two percent of the data we collected via the survey, forty-two percent of respondents, which was a hundred and eighty-six people, said they had complaints related to short term rentals.
A hundred and eighty-six people responded, that's it?
Yes.
Wow, okay, wow. So another comment I'd like to make is every photo that you've used in the presentation is of my neighborhood. My, Old Escondido. So you can imagine how opposed I am to that, straight off the bat. You know, you're talking about not having parking requirements. We already don't have parking requirements in Old Escondido based on the nature of the way the properties are laid out and our streets. So that's not something that I think is a benefit to any short term rental is they don't have to deal with parking. Because now you're putting all those people right next to my house. And I live among some of the best homes in Old Escondido. And I also just, you know, have a lot of concerns for my neighborhood. I don't know if five hundred feet is enough, you know, to maintain our historic, you know, streets, our, you know, the way the properties are laid out. It doesn't, I don't think that's enough from a resident that lives in the part of the city that will be booked, you know? That causes deep concern for me and my neighbors, I can say that. And what else? Yeah, I guess I'm just, my, my last question would be, given the list of cities that surround us that do have it and don't have it, can I ask, have it regulated, I should say? I think there were some that said no, Temecula, is Vista a no as well?
Oh, in Vista, the code is silent, similar to Escondido.
That's what we have. So based on your position as in economic development, can you provide any information on, does it help a city thrive? I mean, I see Vista thriving, we see San Marcos thriving, we see Oceanside thriving, and they don't have these things. So I guess my question is, are we on the right path with one? Because we're certainly not thriving here. So can you give me a little bit more of your, you know, your feedback on that and how you see why we would actually benefit from it? Yeah, from having the ordinance and, you know, I just, you know, one of my concerns always along with my neighbors' friends and fellow residences is that we are not thriving in the city. We have decimated downtown, you know, there's a lot of things that we need to catch up with. So a general comment from me and my colleagues would be, why are we doing something that perhaps could hurt us when we see other cities doing well that don't have an ordinance and don't want one?
So for this process, city staff is going through the mechanisms we have as a city to determine if this should be allowed or if it should not be allowed. And if allowed, what those regulations would be. And this is the process we're going through. So there is a possibility that this will not be approved by some council or they'll decide to not approve it, or perhaps they will with modifications. I think it's very important that the public continue to give their feedback on what they'd like to see in their neighborhoods and how this ordinance would potentially affect them. I think there are multiple factors that go into the city's economy specifically. So as the Economic Development Director, it's my job to implement the comprehensive economic development strategy that the city has set to adopt, which prioritizes land for jobs and housing. And I think it's important to go through this process to understand public feedback so that council can make an informed decision on the direction they should go with this particular ordinance. City council did give staff direction to explore all revenue options. Currently, the city is in a financial state where we are in a ten million dollar annual structural budget deficit. And so this is one mechanism that city staff is exploring to help bridge that budget deficit to continue providing city services.
Thank you, and if I can ask another question. To the, to the note of, I think there's a lot more literature available these days in the forms of articles, whatever, that really push back on the short term rental for taking a chunk out of necessary housing. I think that's a definite concern these days. The short terms take away from long terms. And yes, we might have some, but we don't have enough. So can you speak a little bit to anything on that point? Like, have you uncovered something in your research that you could share? That either, I don't know, educates me a little bit more on things that I read? Have you gone down this avenue?
Staff and our consultants have explored multiple pieces of literature and research that have been available. And this ordinance that we have is a conglomeration of what has been explored. And ultimately, it will come down to public input and city council decision and your input as well.
First, I want to thank Commissioner McCarrow, he has some very excellent questions and brought us some excellent points. So I just have a few questions. First of all, I'm going to address two points that were brought up by the audience. One, has staff taken into consideration the impacts that they might have in close proximity to schools? And if not, should you?
That's a great question. And currently, the ordinance does not have any provisions related to proximity to schools. So this is information that city staff will take back and explore with the Economic Development Subcommittee and also mentioned in city council presentation.
Okay. What is the benefit to the city of, in addition to charging an applicant or prospective renter of a segment, in addition to a permit, a business license? What is the benefit to the city other than additional revenue?
So the benefit to the city in addition to revenue, by having an ordinance, these short term rentals can be regulated. So currently, there is no mechanism to regulate them. So either the city needs, the city is in a state of needing to clarify the municipal code. So either we need to not allow them or allow them with regulation so that the city has the ability to impose fines or terminate the permits for locations that are not acting according to the ordinance.
If, if a homeowner is being disturbed by the neighboring short rental, how are they able to contact the owner of the rental to get a timely response to correct disturbances such as potential noise or parking interference at their home? What mechanism do they have to contact that property owner? And I know the staff is allowing the property to respond within an hour. Is allowing them sixty minutes to clear up a problem that's disturbing the residents a little generous?
So currently today, if there is an issue, either code enforcement or the police department will respond, depending on the time of day. So police responds during night complaints and co-compliance during business hours. But those complaints currently are not documented as being associated with short term rentals and there is no long term mechanism to revoke that use on that property. This would allow a potential revocation of a license and not allow that use on that property if there are complaints. So in addition to being able to call co-compliance or police as is available today, there will also be a hotline that people can call to record complaints as well. And within that one hour period, that, that host is required to contact the transients or the guests that are staying at that location.
Are you suggesting they have an hour from once you receive the message on the voicemail? As opposed to an hour from when the neighbor was issuing his complaint that he's being disturbed or boxed into his driveway from irregular parking?
So the, the complaint, if they call the owner of the property, they should be able to respond within one hour. However, that will be difficult for the city to document if we're not contacted first. So it will be difficult to enforce if that response does happen within an hour. However, if it's a complaint that is recorded to the city, then we'll be able to track that data to see if then there's multiple violations. So for example, if there's one noise violation and the volume, the host contacts the guest, the volume is turned down, and then an hour, hour later, their volume goes up again, that would be considered a second violation. So it's really putting the responsibility on the owner of the property and their designated need to control the activity of the guests of that property.
Okay, so you're confident that if there's an extraordinary noise level going on next door to my home from a second rental and my children are trying to sleep because they're ill, that calling non-emergency police department, the police are going to be able to respond timely and address the issue and resolve the issue?
Police response time always has a priority based on the severity of the cases they're responding to. So if there is, if there are a high number of critical crimes or accidents that evening, it may take them longer to respond to a noise violation complaint.
Okay, question whether I would want to live in that situation, okay. Other question is, you brought, one of the best points you brought up, I thought, is the short term rentals is eating away at long term rental availability? It is, cities are losing some of their long term housing availability and rents are going up because of them. This may be an extreme example, but I saw that in Austin, Texas, I was able to count twelve thousand two hundred and five short term rentals. Zillow only showed three thousand seven hundred single detached rentals. Now I realize Zillow doesn't show everything that's available, but I still thought that was quite a gap. And I know part of the problem is, at least in Austin, corporations are buying up these homes and making an investment in industry that, so I was trying to think of ways we can prevent that from accelerating or even for a individual proprietor to buy multiple units and start his own cottage industry, no pun intended. I know San Francisco and Portland have a one host, one house policy. Has staff looked into that?
Yes, that is something that can be implemented into the ordinance.
In my opinion, that would help control the situation. Those are all my questions.
On that note, that one, okay, so let me just focus this. So clearly, what Commissioner Barber just said about other cities having stronger ordinances, can I ask what, why you don't have stronger language for some of the things that people have brought up? The schools, owners living in their homes, why you thought that wasn't important looking at our city?
So we worked with a consulting company to adopt a policy that was in line with what is seen in most cities across the country that end up adopting ordinances. And we can definitely make modifications to this ordinance, we just. We just have a starting point that we're discussing tonight and that's available for public review and input.
And if I may, that is part of the reason why the item is before the Planning Commission this evening for land use considerations. So as you're deliberating, as you're discussing, these are all data points that the Economic Development Team will take into consideration and pass on to council as well. So obviously, there's been a concerted point about potential distance requirements from schools. But that is a purpose of tonight's function.
Okay.
Did I hear, the city has the opportunity to charge retroactively for three years to a homeowner, a short-term rental person?
Correct. Legally, cities may collect up to three years in arrears.
That just seems onerous to me. I mean, the ordinance wasn't there. They didn't know. Nobody would know that, you know what I mean? I would strike that as my pitch there. Yeah, I agree with hosts onsite, I think is important for Escondido as a city. I would endorse that. So excuse my ignorance about business licenses, but is it possible to just permit it without having to charge for a business, to not have a business license? That you just simply permit?
Currently, in the city of Escondido, anyone conducting business in the city of Escondido is required to have a business permit and a short-term rental is considered a business operation.
And did I mention that the proximity to schools issue, I think, is an easy one to adopt? I would endorse that as well. That would take up huge tracks, actually. Since on the south side of Escondido, there are five schools within a two or five square meter to take out. But anyway, I agree with that.
Thank you. I would agree with my colleague. I think any retroactive financial on residents of the city operating for the past three years on things they were not aware of would be onerous. My first question I have is regarding, I wanted to drill down a little bit on the data. You mentioned that there are stakeholders in this case and there are goals. And I wanted to review in particular the noise complaint. Noise and parking seem to be some of the primary concerns. When it comes to noise, I know that the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, has a mechanism to better drill down on the problem and developing a way to get better data. With the data we have, I want to be sure that we don't jump to conclusions that we shouldn't based on the sparse data that we have. Having said that, what do we know about the noise complaints specifically? Are these noise complaints, do they have enough granularity to understand whether they are in relation to short-term rentals, to rentals at all, or just to complaints of noise? Is there that kind of data currently?
Unfortunately, currently, there is not. So I verified with both code enforcement and with the police department, that level of data is not currently collected. And it's something that we can look into in the future.
Okay. I appreciate that. My concern is just that, that we get, we get a noise complaint and it's aggregate data. We don't know if that's just the people that live there, if it's long-term rentals or if it's short-term rentals. So I want to be sure we don't ascribe unfairly that problem to this group specifically. Secondly, let's say, I want to, we have folks here tonight that have represented their point of view. I get a little bit troubled when I see that the data that we've collected from public input currently is nine percent or eight-point-something percent only represents those that rent properties. That doesn't fairly represent them. In addition to that, you know, we look at the total aggregate number of those that did participate, which you would think are primarily individuals that have a complaint. They have enough desire to report or complain about something that they show up for the survey and less than half of those are reporting noise to the problem. So that concerns me a little bit as well. I want to be sure that, as was expressed by some of the comment here, that we are, I, one of the stakeholders is the city of Escondido. We need to capture the opportunity for economic benefit in legitimate business practices. I looked at, I wanted to be sure that for the city's sake, we're looking at a TOT or transient occupants tax that would recover. I looked at Oceanside, I believe it's 10% is what they charge. And I also looked at the postings and got a basic idea of what the market would bear based on the different cities in North County, our neighbors and us, and where the market would sit in terms of a typical rental price. Looking at that, I came up with roughly the same number that's projected in terms of manual revenue on TOT for the city. But what it also told me was that the city of Oceanside and Vista and Poway and Escondido all have, per market at least, roughly the same rental number in terms of the rent. I want to be sure that we don't become an anomaly and hurt our opportunity for economic development by saying, well, we're going to collect 10% if we put that as a number based on what city council would decide. We're going to project that we're going to get 300K a year on TOT, but by putting an onerous ordinance in place, we've just cut our business down. And so, both to the concerns of the public that has expressed their concerns here and the stakeholder that would be the city, I want to be sure that we do keep a mindful eye, not only for those concerns that we have as individuals that live within the city, but also for the onerous nature of the ordinance on the other side of the coin. Some of those that I'm concerned about, for instance, are, let's say, we're talking about a 500-foot distance. That would mean, boy, I would like to, let's say, this family here that says, we want to, we want to supplement our income with this business practice. Whoops, our neighbor's already doing that. That means we don't have the opportunity to do it. The concern was expressed here. Hey, I don't want a whole bunch of them around my house. I don't want 10 people doing that. Balancing those two, I would suggest maybe looking at a less onerous but still restricting. You know, I was thinking, boy, maybe you say two within that 500. So you have two neighbors that are doing it and no more. That would enable some family that is not out of luck because somebody's already doing it. Okay. Let's see. I'm concerned with the onerous nature potentially requiring a host to post their permit number. And I said, okay, is this a practice? I know this came from consultant recommendations. However, I looked, I could not find in the adjacent cities anybody that is doing that. Not one rental that I could look up is doing that practice. So I'm worried about the onerous nature of that requirement. There was concern about, a family expressed concern about having to display in the front of their house that this is a short-term rental. In just addressing those concerns and balancing them, I'm trying to understand what the benefit would be of having them do that. And this, I guess, would be a form of a question. What do you perceive, and maybe the consultant suggests this, so you may not have clarity on it, but is there a perceived benefit to having someone post that in their home?
One of the perceived benefits is that a community member could contact the person responsible for the home to issue a complaint directly to them to remedy it before calling the city for code enforcement or police enforcement.
Okay. Okay, understood. Thank you. That's helpful. I am, I am concerned about the onerous financial nature of this. And certainly, there's cost recovery for our efforts as a city. Certainly, there's transient occupancy tax. I'm worried about a duplicity of the permit fees. We have a permit fee that we're requiring to be renewed annually and we have a business license fee. Number one, can we make that one fee and not a duplicitous annual renewal fee? Certainly, there's cost recovery for acquiring a permit, but if there's renewing a permit, perhaps we can, the permit renewal does not have a fee associated with a recurring practice. And the, maybe the business license is an annual fee. That's a potential, non-double up every year on that. Also, I would assume that the first time we require a permit, there is recovery cost, but on follow-ups, there probably is not.
And to make one clarification on that point, so for things like fees, that's only allowed to be cost recovery. So the cost of processing an application, for example, or the cost of conducting an inspection. The revenue comes from the business license tax and the TOT. And that, the business license is related to gross receipts of the business and then the TOT would be a percentage.
So do you anticipate then that the permit, recurring permit annually, would require a recurring inspection annually? Is that the anticipation?
That is currently how it's written. And again, looking for feedback in case there's opportunity for adjustment.
Part of that is in a frame of a question. That is, what is the expectation that would be inspected? An inspector would show up to inspect? Do we have some criteria to know what that is?
They conduct inspections based on building requirements to make sure that it is a space that is defined in the ordinance as being one that is acceptable for short-term rentals. So they check to make sure there's a bathroom, they make sure it's not an ADQ, it's a safe location, that it's habitable, it's not a yurt or a bus. And from what we have heard from our code compliance department, that they anticipated being a very short process of quick inspection to just verify that the location is described as it truly stands.
Okay. Thank you. It leads to another question. I think of the, you know, if you go on to any of these, any of these advertising sites, you'll see multiple listings for yurts and for trailers and for, I thought, okay, well, where should we stand on that? And I think the state of California and the county of San Diego maintain camping sites. You can go camp at a state park, you can go camp at a county campground. Should we limit the ability of a private practice camping or yurting or any of that? What is the thought process in completely restricting or prohibiting the use of those types of activities instead of, instead of putting standards to them utterly restricting?
The intention in this case was to make sure that safety requirements were met, both for the potential transients staying at the location and for neighbors.
Okay. If safety is the concern, my input would be that as per the campgrounds, county and state campgrounds, where that practice is safe, that we look to a path of standards as opposed to restriction for appropriate yurt activities, appropriate trade activities, whatever those are, rather than a flat-out restriction. I asked individuals what they thought about the idea of restricting wedding or other types of events. And at first, they thought that was onerous. And then I asked, okay, well, what if your neighbor was having a wedding every weekend because they had this fantastic house? It was great for wedding events and 10 million people a year wanted to rent their house. And they said, well, that changes it. So my thought on this, if that's consistent with addressing the concerns but not being overly onerous, I might recommend that if a neighbor of mine had an event once a year, once every six months, it probably wouldn't bother me. They had it every weekend. Maybe the idea of restriction is a limitation on wedding for large events as opposed to outright, excuse me, restriction, is a recommendation. In the ordinance for the city of Oceanside, I saw the differentiation between a permit for this use versus a bed and breakfast or a rental with the occupant, with the owner still occupying at the same time. Do we meet that distinction as well in our ordinance? Or is there?
Currently, we do not. And in January of this year, Oceanside specified that non-host short-term rentals were only permissible in coastal towns.
That non-host short-term rentals are only permissible? Okay. And are those just? Do you understand, do you, was there any clarity? Do you understand why it is they differentiated between the non-host and host originally? What are you understanding for that?
For that particular case, it had to do with neighborhood character and frequency and activity of guests.
One of my concerns is, we are, we are trying with our permitting process to beat cost recovery. I also hear about the website, the software, additional staff. Do we have an anticipation of the additional costs? We would, you know, are we, are we anticipating adding staff to administer or manage what the city would need to for this? And do we have our arms around, you know, what kind of costs we're going to generate in trying to implement the ordinance?
A program like this would be 100% cost recovery and generate revenue for the city. In terms of specific staff costs, there would be initial staff time required for implementation of the new software. And then it would actually limit the staff time needed to respond to inquiries such as helping an individual complete their application online because the third party would offer phone support, email support, and a variety of languages to help anyone through that process of registering. And the only direct increase in staff long-term would be the addition of a code compliance officer to conduct inspections and be available for more hours during the week to respond to complaints.
So this is, this is a, add a plus-one personnel for code compliance to?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. And anticipated software costs as well, I assume, for this administration program?
Correct. However, the cost of the permits cover that cost.
Gotcha. Okay, my last question is regarding the max, the cap of 2% total housing in single-family dwellings within the city. First question is, that's at the bottom of the range of our neighbors at 2% to 7%. Well, currently, based on the number, I think the number currently was 2, oh, I forgot, but the number of current, the estimation of current rentals in the city are. Do you know where we sit in that 2% where we currently are?
So the 2% to 7% is a national average for cities that do allow short-term rentals. They allow 2% to 7% of their total housing stock. So our Economic Development Subcommittee gave us a recommendation to go on that low side of 2%, which could be up to over 900 units throughout the city. Currently, we sit at an estimated 181 units currently available online. However, it's not, currently, we're not aware of how many would be permitted under this ordinance.
Okay. That gives me comfort. I looked at the total number of, we eclipse our neighbors, we also eclipse them in total population, but if we are at that threshold to the 900, then that seems... then that seems like a reasonable number to me. Thank you.
All right, Judy.
He took all my questions. So, no, actually, there were just a couple of things. I did like differentiating between the different types of short-term rentals. I think that is important, that you brought up. Regarding the distance from schools and parks, I do agree, you know, with the way things are now, we do have a responsibility to protect the most vulnerable, so, which are the children. So, that's something that's important, because we know how predators work. They don't necessarily stay in their own homes. So, that's something that I think we need to look into. Also, with complaints in regards to complaints, how are we going to know if those are well-founded complaints? You know, who's going to be responsible for that? Say, I'm tired of my neighbor, and they're not doing anything wrong, but I'm going to complain, complain, because I want to have a short-term rental. So, if I shut them down, I can open mine. So, you know, is there something that's going to be put, that's going to be put in place to see as to whether or not they are valid? Is my concern.
Any complaints will be judged against the noise and maintenance ordinances that we have. City Council requested a, an overview of our current noise ordinance, and that will be going to Council, April 10, I believe, for review. So, those complaints would be held to those same standards.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just have a quick question. You mentioned that this ordinance was developed in a collaborative process across departments within the city. I'm just wondering, how is that going to play out in respect to execution and implementation? Is it still going to be disseminated? Who has the final say here? Who's responsible for the implementation of the ordinance?
This ordinance would continue to be a collaborative, cross-departmental effort. And currently, it would sit under economic development. We are the department that also oversees business license. And so, this would be seen as a similar function to business license. Thank you.
Stan.
Thank you for the presentation, all the research that was done. It's much appreciated, because it looks like you guys went through a lot of work to put this together. It's tough for me, because I'm kind of a free-market sort of person. I've stayed in Airbnbs, and it's been something that was better than being at a motel or a hotel. But my concern is for the community, of course. So, we're balancing a couple of different things here. We're balancing opportunities for people to come to the city of Escondido, to stay in something a little bit different than is available via motel hotel, and to come and spend money in our fine city. But at the same time, we have residents here that have certain expectations in their neighborhood to know who their neighbors are, and that's not changing on a daily basis. So, you know, we have to balance both of these things, that we want the economic benefits of having this sort of transient guests, but we don't know who they are. Many times, they can be very disruptive. And, you know, if it's in close proximity to a school, you have those folks out there that are on the devious side. So, this becomes a really, really difficult assessment of what the best way to implement and gain on both sides of this. Restrictions at the level that's been placed upon this, you know, for me, it kind of provides the ability for the city to regulate this, to ensure that certain problems are not going to arise. And if they do, then there's, you know, regulations in place to either correct the problem or eliminate the problem. So, how do we go about getting a perfect ordinance? There's no way. It's just not going to happen. You can't eliminate all of the various things that can happen. So, the questions that I have will formulate my opinion kind of at the end of all of this. First, ADUs and the SB9s. That is specifically in state law that you cannot utilize those for short-term rentals? Is that the case? I just happen to come across it.
Specifically with ADUs, and I'd have to double-check on SB9. Are you aware?
It's not something I know off the top of my head, so we can follow-up with you on that.
Okay. The SB9, I'm not as, well, I'm kind of wondering, because part of SB9, you have to have the owner living right there in order, in order to do the SB9. So, to restrict that just seems counterintuitive, because it seems much, for a short-term rental, it sure seems a whole lot better for the whole community that the owner's right there on-site. So, you have one person, one contact that you can go to if there are problems, because they're on-site. So, I agree with a requirement that the host has to be on-site. Off-site host, you know, then you never know where they're going to be. They could be off on vacation in Tahiti for all anybody knows. And that phone call to be responded to in an hour? That may never happen. And that just puts the burden, you know, on the city to deal with these complaints. The other question I've got is Oceanside. So, they have this ordinance. What's their, what's their feeling about this? Is it working? Is it not working? Has it helped? Is it doing anything? That's the question.
In regards to Oceanside, there's a variety of opinions from the public. As I mentioned, in January, the city council did amend their ordinance to make sure that no host locations were only in coastal zones. So, that's one indication of the process they've gone through to amend the ordinance.
So, are they finding success in that? Yeah, it's a money generator.
It is collecting revenue for the city, generating revenue for the city.
Now, what about on the complaint side? Are they saying, yeah, are they identifying noise complaints and other complaints and collecting data to say, this is from a short-term rental versus long-term rental versus a homeowner? Are they even going through that process for the complaints that they do receive?
That's a great question. I have not spoken with Oceanside specifically about the data points that they're collecting now. I haven't seen their data reports specifically, but it's something that I can look into.
Okay. Thank you. So, we've got roughly, well, on the complaint basis, on the short-term rentals that we have in Escondido, we have 180. We don't, we're not collecting any data on the complaints that are received from the short-term rentals.
Correct.
Now, that kind of makes it difficult for us to go, is this, is this a real problem that's occurring or perceived problem? Or is it kind of a onesie-twosie? Because I could certainly see that a short-term rental, you're going to get folks that come in there that are just blatant, not very good. And they don't care about all the noise. They're partying, having a good time. You know, that's what people do many times when they go on vacation. So, it sure seems like we have to somehow, even beginning now, to determine if complaints are coming from a short-term rental. Regarding the current number of short-term rentals, so if we know that they're out there, so if this ordinance becomes, gets approved, are we going to be sending code enforcement to each and every one of these and saying, you have to get a permit within X number of days? Is that part of the implementation program?
So, part of the implementation program, we'll be working with a third party to proactively reach out and request that they file for a permit. One of the incentives could be related to the fact that one is only allowed in this current form of the ordinance every 500 feet. So, there's a sense of get in line first in order to receive your permit. Also, the platforms that host will send the ordinance to their host. I had the opportunity to meet with Airbnb, and they said, as soon as we finalize our ordinance, that they work to educate their hosts to make sure they're compliant.
So, what happens to, you know, some of these 180 that are in good standing? They don't have complaints. But they're within, they're within 500 feet of one another. And, you know, they come in, and it's like, okay, first guy in, you get the permit, but you've got to close shop? Is that kind of how this is going to work?
The initial implementation has some questions like that to be figured out. So, as the ordinance reads, it would be purely a first-come, first-served for permits. There is an opportunity with implementation to provide an initial exception, if that's something that the city council would like to do. And feedback would be welcome in that area as well. So, for example, in the implementation, the initial rule, we could say, register within X number of days, and you can be grandfathered in without that allowance. But we would have to make that exception in the ordinance.
Okay. What if somebody opens up a short-term rental and does not go through this permitting process? Is there kind of a first warning? And then there's violation notices after that? And they say, well, I'm not going to pay my violation notice. I guess you put a lien on the property like you would do in a code compliance process? So, it's probably pretty similar to that?
Correct. It would be treated as a business operation, similar to if a business was operating illegally without a permit or in the incorrect zoning, then they would be fined, and then the process would escalate.
Okay. So, here's, and my fellow commissioners had great questions, took some of my questions, which is great, and we got answers. And, you know, certainly, you answered those questions. Here's some of my comments. The one host, one STR, I think that that should be put in the code. I think that the host should be on-site. I think we really do need to look at STRs and their distance from schools and parks. The retroactive being onerous. I guess I would see that from the standpoint of that, you know, the... How do I word this? Onerous back three years, where you can't do that, you know, three years from today, or three years back from today. It's almost got to be, you don't implement that until three years from now. So, and I don't know how to word that correctly. But there's got to be that first three years. If you're going to go back and get people that haven't done their permits, it's kind of got to begin three years from approval of the code. That was my thought. Because you can't go backwards three years when there's no code. Posting of the notice on, on any one of these, yeah. I don't think we should be having a posted sign that says, this is an STR. I don't think that's appropriate. However, what I think should be added is, as a part of the permitting process, and I didn't notice if it was in here, but I think neighbors within a certain distance should be given notice every time that business license is renewed. So, that, and on that notice, there should be a contact person in the rules and regulations that are expected to be adhered to by the host of the STR. And I think that's all my comments.
Thank you, Stan. Okay, so, I would like to thank staff. I know the city council has asked you to put together the ordinance, and I think you've done a great job trying to to deal with all of these different opinions. I mean, you can see, there's no, there's seven of us here, and we don't, there's no two that are the same. And so, you had a hard, hard job to do this. I think the regulations, as they're outlined, are onerous. And I'm similar, that I think limited government is the best government. You know, the least amount of government we can get is what we should be striving for. But I also, I recognize the city council's trying to deal with a perceived problem. And I think the city is entitled to its TOT tax. And so, I don't know how we're going to be able to collect a TOT tax without most of what's in this ordinance. Yeah, you need a business license. I mean, the plumber comes, they have to make sure they get a business license to work in Escondido. So, I don't think those kinds of things are too onerous. I think that the sign in your window is, and some of the, some of those other things aren't too onerous. But I think we, I can support having an ordinance for the purpose of collecting the TOT tax. I think that's a valid, valid reason for it. Staff, you don't want us to vote on anything, right? Please not, because we're never going to get a consensus up here.
Just to clarify, it's purely input advisement on the land use considerations, and no voting or motion is required. It's just receive and advise. To follow up on one point, SB9 does not permit for short-term rentals in SB9 properties. I confirm that in government code.
And so, Barry didn't say much tonight, so I'm going to give him one more minute. Thank you. I didn't want to be too quiet. My question is, our role on this topic is an advisory role in providing recommendations for city council's considerations. Is that correct?
Land use components of the ordinance. So, taxation, not really associated with the land use components, separation distance, density thresholds, relations to housing as land use, those types of advisements. And I, frankly, the discussion has generally stayed on that side of it. Couple of points here and there, but...
So, as a, as a deliverable to the city council, that's where my question lies. To staff, okay. So, our, our comments are to be provided to you for your consideration, not to city council for their consideration. Is that correct?
Staff will integrate the comments into the presentation to city council. And after what we've heard tonight, we may go back to the economic development subcommittee to share what has been provided this evening.
Okay. The only reason I ask this is because when city council does ask for our recommendations, we have an opportunity in the review of the minutes of the previous meeting to suggest that something got missed or not included. I don't think we have that opportunity in this case. Is that correct?
That is correct. And then on top of that, we perform action minutes. So, our minutes would not cover the laundry list of items that were discussed. It would be a more general summary. However, both myself and economic development have been taking copious notes. So, we will provide, we will work internally to ensure we covered everyone's points. And we also have audio recording of tonight's meeting, so that if we feel we missed something, we can go back and review.
Thank you. I just, in reviewing some of the city council's meetings, I've seen them ask the question, what were the comments of the planning commissioner? Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much for your time.
Future agenda items is opportunity for our planning commissioners to suggest something for our upcoming agenda.
I would like to request that we discuss conditional use permit violations. I know there has been in the media recently a particular violation, instance of repetitive violations on conditional use permits. And that's in relation to the interfaith. violations on conditional use permits, and that's in relation to the interfaith, it's all over the news. So that initially, in, I believe it was '79, there was a conditional use permit that went to the planning commission before that. So I guess my request is that maybe we just discuss that conditional use permit violation.
Your honor.
So there is a process. The process has two forks. The normal fork is to bring it back to the planning commission. Another option is to take it directly to the city council. My guess is this time, this will go right to the city council if we end up down that thing. Parties are negotiating and trying to update and find a way to resolve other issues that do exist, and do that in a collaborative manner, so it may not even come to either the city council or the planning commission. Easily give you a briefing on how the process works, but the item specifically, interfaith, is not ready for either the planning commission or the city council.
Follow-up question. This is not the first time where there was a, a question, violation of the conditional use permit on something that planning commission put forward. I noticed that in some city ordinances, they have a provision that specifically says that, that if there are violations, then that can eliminate. I'm not sure that I found that in ours, and so this top, this question is more general to any time somebody has violations of that conditional permit that we issued. So generally, are you familiar with anything in our provision that says the planning commission can review or negate a conditional use permit if it's been violated? Is there something specific in our code that deals with that? Do you know?
There is a process to modify, to revoke if there are violations. CUPs do create a right of continued operation unless there is a violation. Sometimes the violations are subjective and are difficult to deal with. We heard a lot of talk today about noise. One person's Bruce Springsteen is another person's, you know, fingernails on the chocolate. So those issues happen every day. I don't think there's an easy answer in hypothetical, other than we have a process to follow. And, and you've been here for a while, most of you, you don't see any CUPs coming back to bring service, and they're never going to work out.
I was just going to clarify, this isn't an item on the agenda. You can vote to, two commissioners may motion, one commissioner may motion, another second that to place a discussion item on the TFA on CUP revocation. Just as a reminder, staff does not provide any information on that. We prepare a general staff report, one page for the general public, but that is a discussion amongst the planning commissioners. If you're seeking an informational kind of study session meeting on CUP revocation, that would be slightly different. As you all may recall, there was a request for North County Mall lease information that was placed on the TBD in April at some point, just based on staff workload and capacity. So I just want to remind everyone of that regarding tonight's agenda.
Maybe, maybe my request would be more general, and that would be for us to understand what our ordinance says as far as the revocation process. I'm motioning that, that we discuss, or that we discuss or understand our ordinance provision regarding CUP revocation. That's my motion. Makes sense?
And, and I guess I'd rather we not do that as a planning commission, and that maybe if commissioners, one or more, are interested in that process, they try to schedule a meeting with staff. That might be the better way to, to learn about the process.
That's my motion. Unless there's a necessity.
Don't see a second. Any other future, future agenda? Anyone else with a comment they'd like to make for an off-agenda item? Planning commissioners' report. I want to thank my wife so much.
I have one comment on the survey.
Sorry, oral comments on something not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
We finished with the agenda items, sorry. Okay. Planning commissioners' report. I want to thank my wife for putting up with me. Today is our anniversary invitation. City planners' report.
Thank you, Chair Paul. So just as a tentative future agenda overview from city planner, we will, we do anticipate having a meeting on 4/9. Obviously, as a part of that, we may or may not have the same planning commission configuration you see here this evening, so as, just a, a thank you to the commissioners who are here and have served on this commission for the last several years, Commissioner Wyler, we have Chair, Chair Paul and Vice Chair Barbey, plus Commissioner Fitzgerald. We will see, I know that tomorrow's meeting, I believe, was canceled, so that was when appointments were going to occur. I don't necessarily know when that will next, the, the subsequent council meeting, I presume, but in the event this is the last meeting with everyone, just thank you for everyone's time and commitment to the community and your patience with staff as we traverse all the ups and downs of, of staffing in the planning division over the last couple of years. It's been a pleasure to work with you even in this brief amount of time, but you, you, whether we see you here again or not, you know, you can always contact staff with any questions or, or concerns you might have. We do anticipate a 4/9 meeting. At this point in time, it will be a light meeting, it'll be receiving of the housing element APR, so it'll be informational, current business, no action required, but informative on the city's progress in meeting their housing needs.
So for point of clarification, I was under the impression the schedule was 4:10 they made that decision, the meeting on 4/10.
Oh, okay, so you have more updated information than I have, so I will see you again at the Sias, that's. Let, let me clarify with Gary over here, and we'll, we'll get back to you. I know that our typical legal staff is not here, and then also that council meeting was canceled, and all kinds of idiosyncrasies happening at this moment, but we will follow up.
Good. Meeting adjourned.